How you doing there?
I am good. That snow really started coming down, eh?
Yes.
Can you hear me Shane?
The very top, right hand.
Hi Sarah, can you hear me now?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, you guys are good.
Audio's fine, I can't, I don't have video up.
I can see you guys.
Well, I can't.
We can't see you.
Oh, you know why? Because I think you guys, if you go over towards the right hand, I think if you like right click in the black area, does it just say like my name and I'm talking?
Yes.
If you say like hide me, or if you go into the participant list, actually that might be easier, go to participant list to the city of Petoskey and then say pin self. Ah. Are you good? Nice work.
Miracles happen.
Are we ready? For the city of Petoskey City Council for December first, two thousand twenty-five, call a order and I ask you to rise with me for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call roll?
Demore?
Present.
Shields?
Present.
Naktrab?
Here.
Walker?
Present.
Murphy?
Present, we have a quorum. Next public hearing, that's a receipt of comments concerning the city's proposed two thousand twenty-six annual budget and property tax mileage rates and appropriations as recommended for the two thousand twenty-six fiscal year. Does anyone wish to speak to council at this time regarding the budget? Therefore, I close public hearing. Next, we have a presentation by Patrick Bolan, CEO and general manager of the Michigan Power Public Power Agency, MPPA, concerning public supply trends in the city's power supply. Welcome. Hit the, hit the thing so it's green.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. It's been a few years since I've personally been here, but I think you've had the pleasure of several MPPA employees speaking before the city council. I think over the last three, three years or so since I've been here. All I know is those TVs weren't here the last time I spoke, so. For how long? I don't want to speak at you, so, and more important thing, I want to make sure I answer questions that you have about the power industry, what's going on with Petoskey specifically, so I don't want to get bogged down in any kind of stuff here. So, we can handle that any way you want, I can just make sure I leave time or we can address some of the key concerns or questions you have now too, so.
Do your presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna rip through this very quickly, particularly the early stuff. This is really just more of acclamation slides, talking about public power, so you can, you can slide, it's just a way to look you. So, you know, we really are working hard alongside our sister organization, which is the Michigan Municipal Electric Association. You know, to describe the real, the real inherent benefits of public power, you know, I speak a lot in front of other audiences that aren't public power utilities and I try to emphasize these, these key points in a variety of different ways. But it's true, from a, from a cost perspective and from a reliability perspective, and those are the two principal components, as well as the decision about your power supply driven by your community. Those are the three aspects of public power that are the most advantageous compared to other utilities. And so we like to help through the joint action agency, our members achieve those three components. And we do that in a variety of different ways. Economies of scale is the, is the primary driver for that. Strength in numbers, but in the end, we try to deliver very specific, unique needs for each of our communities, because we have very, very different demographics among our, our members. There's the up north communities, there's very industrious towns in the south and very different sizes. Utilities all the way from four hundred and fifty megawatts down to nine, nine megawatts. It's a very, very different needs and staffing and capabilities. So, the joint action agency is kind of that centerpiece that tries to make all that work for everyone. We can slide forward here. Keep going. Oh yeah, yep. So it's just, just a quick acclamation here. There's twenty-two members. I try, I can't get out to all twenty-two members every year. I try to get to somewhere between eight and ten members a year to their city councils or their utility boards. About a third of our members have utility boards. They don't, they have a city council too, but the utility board is really the governing body that makes the decisions about the aspects of utility operations is very different. Usually those are larger, larger towns that have that. But, you know, we're growing as a result of some interesting developments that are going on in some of our communities. So for the first time in probably fifteen years, you know, we're seeing pretty significant load growth. Next slide. We don't need to get bogged down here, but really economies of scale and risk diversification are really at the centerpiece of what MPPA has done really since its founding. Our organization is very different than it was even ten years ago, let alone forty. However, these two economic principles are still at the bedrock of MPPA. And it really does allow a small community like Petoskey, it is a small utility, to be able to build a portfolio of resources and supply that you otherwise would be difficult to do on your own. And those two economic principles are, are the key benefits there, where you can compete with even the largest utilities by partnering with your other public power entities. Next slide. I'll just kind of buzz through here, but these are really at the centerpiece of our activities. Everything we do, do is about competition. We want to make sure that we have a competitive structure for our members, whether we're trying to issue buy power in the marketplace or build power. We want that to be through a competitive platform. Risk management is a very, very important aspect of our business and it's growing in importance with this industry and where prices and credit and challenges are in this industry now. Risk management is becoming more and more important. Obviously, industry expertise, you're counting on us to know a lot about the power markets. That's what we do. And then, of course, the concepts that we just talked about, sharing. Next slide. So, obviously, members are at the center of everything we do. We own large transmission assets on behalf of our members. We own, own power supply on behalf of our members. Market operations is a little, little less understood aspect of what we do every day. That's really the day-to-day activities we do to participate in the power markets that, you know, has a twenty-four seven operation. And then member service is a, is a growing, this isn't true just with MPPA. If you go across the United States now, joint action agencies are doing more for their members than they used to. And there's a whole probably hour-long conversation about why that is, and we won't do that obviously today, but member service is a growing aspect of our business. Next slide. So we have a strategic plan. We redevelop it every three years. It's a five-year strategic plan. These are the, really the four key components of that. Decarbonization, obviously. Decentralization, which is really an interesting component that we'll talk about now here and, and some of the things that we've been trying to do, actually with the city of Petoskey, and run into some political stags there. Engagement, this industry is getting far more complicated than it's ever been and having our governing bodies of our members truly engaged in the business is critically important. And then, of course, the end-use customers, they're becoming smarter. They're more interested in energy and they have a lot more tools at their disposal. So they, we have to attend to that. And our members obviously do, and we're now partnering with our members in, in ways we never did, even when I started at MPPA, which is ten years ago. Next slide. So what's going on in the world in the energy business? Well, I just mentioned increasing end-user participation. That's true. Even for people who have a Nest thermostat in their home or, or knockoffs of those types of products, up to the very large customers. What's the biggest thing you read about almost every day in the newspaper? Data centers, AI? I mean, they are changing the landscape. Those are end-use customers and some of the things that they're building are bigger than cities. So they have a very influential impact on, on our industry. Political discontinuity. And we were on a very interesting trajectory until a year ago, or less than a year ago, and now suddenly the rules have changed, but we're still trying to make twenty-year investments, twenty-year, twenty-five-year decisions. And having that change every four years is just not conducive to our business. Data intensity. I think we have a million records a week that we deal with, which is incredible. In the data that we do in our market operations. Sustainability focus, despite some of the political changes, generally speaking, most of the customers of most of our members obviously are still trying to build a sustainability platform. Diverse resource control. What does that mean? Well, if you think about the old days of the power business, there was a couple of very, very large power plants and that was it. Today, there's a lot of small resources that are creating or, or manipulating energy usage. And so when you just, that's, that's what decentralization is. You just have a lot more components in the system than you used to. By the way, the more components you get in any system, the complexity rises, and that's true of all industries. Rapid rule changes, and then, of course, low growth, which we haven't seen in a long time. So those are the things that are happening in our industry right now that we're trying to deal with at MPPA on behalf of our members. Next slide. Next slide. So, interconnecting power generation to the big three forty-five, one twenty-five KB lines, it's taken a lot longer than it used to. I won't get into all the reasons for that, but it's driving a behavior at MPPA where we're actually now actually trying to work inside our member systems. It's easier, it's faster. So, this is an outcome of of changes in the grid and, and rapid deployment of a lot of largely intermittent resources over the years. But again, part of that diverse resource control. Next slide. I'm trying to hustle through these. The transmission system, we're a transmission owner. One of the reasons why we are very interested in transmission is because it's becoming an increasingly large percentage of the total delivered cost of power. And there's three ways we can manage that. Use less of it, which we're always interested in doing that through our members. Challenging rates at FERC, very difficult to do and very time-consuming, expensive. Or investing in transmission. And our cost of capital is a lot lower than the twelve percent returns that private transmission companies get. So those are the three things that we do to deal with this growing percentage of your, your total delivered power cost. Next slide. Investing in transmission. So, there's a lot of uncertainty in the business right now. These, I don't want to get too bogged down here, but these are futures that the large market operators posted here just recently. And it shows that there is a scenario where we could have eight point two gigawatts of deficiency, or we could have eleven, I put my own glasses on, so I read my own numbers, eleven point four gigawatts of excess. And so you might say, well, how do you plan for something dramatically different? And a lot of that has to do with things that we don't have time to get into in too great a detail, but it has to do with getting permits, getting interconnected to the transmission system, delays for equipment. There's a, a lot of complexities out there. And, and so the uncertainty about will we have enough resources to serve load is, is a growing source of, of, of uncertainty. Next slide.
Are you stating, can you go back one?
Yeah.
Are you stating that in twenty-eight, twenty-nine? Are you stating that at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, there's possibility, there's, there is possibility of brownouts or something like that?
It doesn't necessarily mean it'll be brownouts, but it means that there's a possibility that we'll have a deficient amount of capacity to meet the reliability criterion, which, with the historical reliability criterion in the power businesses, you try to serve a, a one-day outage in ten years. That's, that's the, that's the criterion you solve for. So, this means we're short of that. We could be short of that by eight point two gigawatts, and we don't need to get into, gigawatts are a big number. There's megawatts and there's kilowatts and there's watts, but and so, but at the same time, there could be six point seven gigawatts of, of excess above that criterion. And a lot of that depends on these futures that are stabled above. You're, do we have four point seven gigawatts of additions per year, or do we have eight point six? And that's, that's the difference. That's, forecasting is becoming much more challenging than it, than it used to be. Next slide. So, this will be near and dear to your hearts, because I know Petoskey has been one of our members who've been much more focused and aggressive on renewables. So we did, we've been active, so, I mean, we've done an incredible amount of renewable business in the last six years. One point four billion dollars committed. All of them went smoothly until two thousand twenty-one. Then we ran into all sorts of problems, COVID supply chain problems, a lot of it was political though. Tariffs, labor law challenges with China, a lot of polysilicon for solar was coming in from, from the Asian countries. And so, we saw and have seen a very significant increase in the cost of these projects. The ones we did in nineteen, the cost is double today from what we did in two thousand nine. Really glad that the projects we did get done. We did some great projects and you were participants in all of them. Wish you would have done more at this point. And then along came the, I don't know how you said, one big beautiful bill. I can't believe they actually called it that, but. And that's now sort of undone or undoing a lot of what was in the IRA. And so that's really created a lot of angst and challenges in terms of, well, exactly what should we be focusing on now? And that's changed a bit of our focus. We're trying to combine and I'll get to why I think that should be of interest to you here in a moment. Next slide. So these are the things that, you know, we are focused on with all of our efforts inside of MPPA right now, these three things. And obviously we're focused on other things as well, but these are the three centerpieces of our efforts here over the next two thousand twenty-six. Next slide. So we can talk a little bit about you know, the clean energy efforts. All the projects that we've worked on have all been located in Michigan because of the tax code up until the IRA passed where there's some elective pay options. All of the, the tax code, and really even still with depreciation and so forth, favors private, entered, private entity ownership. And so, we got the benefit of that through power purchase agreements. And we did a lot of those. And that's why I said, yeah, I think almost one point three billion dollars of commitments. So you can see where Petoskey was in fifteen, which is actually when I started at MPPA to where you are today. So, you know, three hundred percent increase in your renewable portfolio. It's seems like no big deal. It's, it's a big deal. It's a lot of work. However, under Michigan, current Michigan legislation, that number's got to get to fifty percent by two thousand thirty. And that's gonna be tricky. But we'll talk about that. Next slide. Yep, I already talked about this. In, in the interest of time, I'll skip it. Resource adequacy, it's a big deal. The Great Recession of that two thousand eight to two thousand ten time period, on average, utilities in the Midwest lost ten years of load growth. So from that time period all the way through COVID, it was just a lot cheaper just to buy excess reliability, if you wanted to call it that, from generators on, on the system. Today, you can't do that anymore. And that just didn't happen overnight, of course, but there's now low growth. There hasn't been new builds. We've moved to mostly renewables. The way the rules have been working for renewables, they don't get the same level of accreditation, the amount of capacity they can deliver to the system. And so we're, we're now having this resource adequacy issue, and really it's going to come down to building. And frankly, we'd like to have more control over what we build and rely less on others. And so a lot of our strategic objectives are focused on that. Next slide. So this is Petoskey specifically, and you can see that you're in really good shape on capacity. Generally speaking, through twenty-nine, thirty, but in thirty, thirty-one, you go negative. And we're obviously aware of that. We're actually, this, we created this runway, which is great for ourselves, but we've got to act now because it takes three, four, five years and even longer to get new capacity on the system. And depending on the kind of projects. And so, that's why we're feverishly working on all these efforts now so that we can, we have to file with the state of Michigan, February of twenty-seven, or March of twenty-seven, through the Public Act three forty-one, a capacity demonstration. Says we have enough capacity to meet our, our load in that time period, two thousand thirty. So, it's one year away. We have to notate what we're doing in thirty, thirty-one. Next slide. This is a very busy slide, and I'm sorry about this, should have done it better, but this is just a stack bar chart that shows where the different sources of your energy is coming from forecasted through two thousand thirty. And I could have done this out through two thousand forty, of course. And so, you're out of the coal business, or out of the coal business. That's no longer going to be part of your portfolio. And the only thing that and, and gas is still part of your portfolio, obviously. Renewables are obviously a growing share, and I wish we could have all labeled those the same colors, but they're, they're in some different colors there. Because you have wind and solar, and I have to get on my people for picking renewables brown, but nonetheless, they're there. So this kind of shows you where your portfolio is and the, I don't know what you call that. Is it pumice or light purple or, I don't know what that color is. That represents the amount of energy right now that is forecasted to come from the market. We have a regimented risk management policy that rolls every, every year. And it sets the percentages of hedges that we have to have in place for the next five years. And so this will all get changed here once we get into two thousand twenty-six. Next slide.
Does that mean that one-third going back?
Yep.
That means that one-third by twenty thirty, one-third over thirty-three percent of our energy would come from the market rather than from any of those that we did.
In two thousand twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Two thousand thirty, it's, it's twenty-nine or thirty.
Yes, that's right.
Those, that means that we're going out and we're purchasing it on the market?
Yes. Right, but before that, before that happens, we will have made a decision under our risk management plan, so that number will get a lot smaller next year.
Okay.
We have a
Do, do we have an option as a city?
Absolutely.
So if we want to say, you know,
Yep.
without knowing, without getting the report in on, on what what the cost per kilowatt is of natural gas, you know, all of those pieces, we will not be able to make any real decisions.
And we have a risk management plan that you are subscribed to and you We have a risk management plan that you are subscribed to and you, but you have the ultimate trump card. If you want to not subscribe to it, you can change your mind. But, um, but we come with, with recommendations to meet prescribed percentage, what we call price certainty. Because you have to make rates for your retail customers. You need enough understanding from us, what are our wholesale power supply costs? And so we have this obligation to have a certain percentage of your portfolio be price certain, known. So by the time you get to the year 2026, you have to have between 85 and 100% of your needs priced certain, known. So you can develop rates for your own customers. Okay. That's the last slide. The other one's just a nice fun graphic. Um, I raced through those because I wanted to make sure I was available to, uh, answer questions. But one of the things I did want to talk about is resource adequacy and decarbonization do kind of come together along with behind the meter strategies, which you remember I said, we want to work inside our communities. The one thing that still works inside of even the one big beautiful bill act is battery energy storage. And so, um, even though we've struggled getting this pace renewable solar project in town, and we'll talk about that. I can answer, ask question, answer questions about that. And I know my time's up here, but, um, one of the things we are very, very focused on the resource adequacy is not trying to do a one size fits all for our members. Some want to put gas fire generation in, some want to put batteries in. Both are very legitimate sources of resource adequacy that we are working with our members on inside of their communities. I just wanted to make that point. Um,
Do you want to address, that's that you brought it up?
Yes, Pace.
2023, City Council is presented by, you know, the group-
Yep.
-on the city landfill.
Yep.
That fulfill 10% of our city needs.
Yep.
Is that, where did that end?
It's not a good place. So, um, we were working with a, uh, an organization called Soul America. Um, they were getting, um, uh, financing structures and grants through the USDA. Um, I can't speak for their business specifically, but I'll just say that the new administration has made the USDA very difficult to work with. And so the lone provisions and terms and conditions that this developer is getting from the USDA are not, in their opinion, financeable. And so, um, you know, I don't think the white flag has been thrown in yet, but it's getting close. And obviously we can't wait either. We have to make decisions for our members. We have a, a power supply plan we have to follow. Um, so this December, um, here at the end of the year, worst case, early January, but I think the end of the year, they're going to have to make a decision. Um, now without the USDA financing, projects still can get built. It's just going to be more expensive and we haven't seen what those numbers look like. I mean, at the very, very beginning, probably in 23, when Steve or I'm not sure who was up here at the time, I mean, we were able to build a solar project in town less than we could build a large utility scale solar project for. That's how beneficial the terms and conditions were from the USDA. And if that, not only has that not gone, not only has that gone away, but it's coincided with just a massive inflation and all of the underlying components that go into power infrastructure, transformers, polysilicon, copper. Um, so yeah, pricing is not very attractive right now. And so if the USDA does not come through, you know, we can't, we have to move forward with our own power supply plan. So.
Questions?
I wish I had better ways to describe it, but, um, this is one of these things where out of our control.
Uncle question, Mr. Moore.
Actually isn't a question, but I would just say what you just described sounds like it's in the lane of political discontinuity.
That would be a great place to put it. Yep. You know, I'm, um, I'm a big believer than in diversifying and everything comes around, goes around. What we think is going to happen is not going to happen. Um, we'll have many more bites at the apple. Fortunately, the way we run our organization is we don't take home run swings. We try to hit doubles, singles. And we've done a lot of that. So your portfolio is in pretty good shape. Um, and that's because of we've just been routinely making decisions and not huge ones. This is a bummer because this would have been a really nice added to your portfolio, but fortunately you weren't like counting on this to be 80% of your power supply. And so it's not going to hurt that much. It's going to hurt. It's just not going to hurt that much.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Mr. Boland. I, I have, I think I was, my first year you came presented and I, I have, I have lots of respect for MPPA and, and really appreciate the role that they play for the city of Petoskey. I, I think we're super fortunate to have a municipality owned, uh, utility department here and we can partner with, um, other communities around the state to, as you said, have strength in numbers. Um, that said, I, I, over the, my five year tenure here, I've, I've become increasingly disappointed with our partnership with MPPA. And, and, um, you know, I understand some of those things are out of your control, but one, one is this, I feel like our partnership has, has held us back in, in several ways, and I'll explain those. Uh, one is this, this landfill project that, you know, we have, I, I and solar council members here, uh, have been encouraging our, the city to, to look at that, that project and make it happen and to reach out and work with other nonprofit partners. Uh, and then when the, uh, the direct pay opportunity came back, came open for, uh, municipalities to receive that, that tax benefit to make it even more financially doable. Um, I was, I felt like we were held back because, well, MPPA has got, got a lead or MPPA is, is who we work through. And it felt like we were hamstrung that way, that we couldn't just take the lead on our, on our own. Um, now maybe that's not the actual case, but
Sure.
that's the way it felt.
That's the perception. Yeah.
Perception.
Yep.
And, and then also the, so we have a renewable energy goal for 2035. And we, I, I have been suggesting that we need to get, uh, an action plan in place to how we're going to do that. What are those, what are those steps? And, and I've, I've been told the MPPA leads, that they'll, they have an action plan for us to get to our renewable energy goal. So again, I'm not saying it's more a perception, but it is Ben, I felt the perception has been a real barrier for us moving forward. 33% is great, but I think it's far short of where we could.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. Um, let me make a key point here. And I didn't make it at the beginning and I probably should have. We're a project based agency. The vast majority of joint action agencies across the United States are all requirements. So actually a project based agency is structured so you, the community do not have to work through MPPA at all. You can actually go out and do your own projects. You can buy your own power. There's no restrictions in our bylaws that says you have to buy through MPPA. Um, really the only reason you should is if it makes economic sense to. So it's the most freeing, um, independent structure of a joint action. It's actually the hardest one as a CEO honestly to manage because, um, I can't just go out and make decisions that on behalf of all our members, I actually have to get their approvals. So I'm sorry that you have felt that way. And, and there could have been instances where maybe if we were, we were on the clock and you didn't work with us on the USDA project and you would have done something else, maybe it would have got done. That's a possibility. Um, but you know, for every one of those, there's a million other examples of where we actually delivered a high value project. I mean, if you go back and look at some of these projects we did in 17, 18, 19, and 20, I mean, we bought renewable power for $30 a megawatt hour. I mean, that's in your portfolio now. So like, like I said, I think there, there are challenges always in this industry and, um, but the trump card you hold is you can always go on your own. You do not have to use MPPA.
Thank you for addressing my comments. Appreciate that. And just one follow up. You mentioned the transmission costs of power. You mentioned the three.
Yeah.
Could I propose a fourth? And I want to see how you think about the, the cost in transition, more diversified energy sources that are close by, um, you know, think of the costs of some smaller scale utility projects, but when they're close by, transmission costs are lower.
100%. I agree with, I agree with that. 100%. I do. Yeah. And I, the problem that most of our members have is they're very concentrated municipals and property is at a, is very scarce to do projects. And typically solar and wind projects take up massive amounts of geography. That's why a lot of, batteries though, don't take up as much, uh, property. And so those are right sized. You can still do solar projects in town too, but.
Tell me, tell me how much, how much, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, yeah.
To do a-
Well, you couldn't do a wind project at all. There's just, it, it, so solar, I mean, when you, when you take in all the buffering and all that, it's about 10 acres a megawatt. Uh, yeah. A megawatt. Yeah.
And we were going to get with our project, three megawatts.
Right. So you need about 30 acres. Now there are projects that have done it seven acres a megawatt. There's projects that have been 12. And I think I'm still on average, it's in that, in that 10 acre. Yeah. Now, technology has improved and it will continue to improve. We're going to get a lot more energy out of future solar panels than out of previous solar panels. There's no question about that. There's bi-facial now. There's all sorts of interesting technologies of getting more. I mean, the sun is the greatest resource there is. We are going to improve there. That's actually another reason why you don't want to go all in on solar now. You want to keep layering in because the technology is always going to improve. You're going to get more energy from solar in the future. I'm the first guy to admit, man, technology solves all of our problems. There could be a day where you could put a project out there and could get three times as much energy out of it. So.
Now it's one megawatt for how many acres?
10.
An acre.
Yeah. So you can see why, with the, maybe a few exceptions, most of our members, when you try to go in there and take 30, 40 acres from them in their communities, that's really, really hard to do. Because typically they want it for industrial or commercial or other real estate. You're fighting over real estate, which is why the, the landfill project was so attractive because you weren't fighting over real estate there. And I really hope something can happen there and I'm confident that it will at some point.
Are you the one that will go out and help find a partner for the city for that project?
Uh, MPPA, yeah, we would absolutely support that. And, and we would assist you in that regard. Absolutely.
Fully, but I think everybody sitting here would like that to happen. Is that correct, council?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. I need to understand. Having gone through this, I, I feel confident that, comfortable in stating personally, I, I hope that you do get involved with helping the city because that's our really only sizable land that city has.
Yeah.
That is available for any kind of renewable energy.
I mean, I went out there seven years ago with Mike Robbins. I remember long before the USDA project and like, wow, this is a pretty cool spot here. There was some worry about how much boring you could do in there without infringing on whatever the, you know, soil forbearance or whatever. I know there's some issues there, but, um, yeah, again, technology keeps improving. So I'm confident you will get something done there at some point. Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick, for your presentation. Um, I also share a lot of, you, I also share a lot of Derek's sentiments in terms of, um, I have been serving on city council, the longest adjacent to the mayor. And so when the mayor passed the resolution for 100% renewable energy by 2035 in 2018, um, I'm very curious about our path to get there. I too have been told like, let's just like play it out, wait it out, let's take the guidance and direction of MPPA. But I also look and hearing your presentation tonight, you spoke on several things that were, that resonated with me. Economies of scale.
Yeah.
And decentralization.
Yeah.
So when I think about our region, and I first of all, want to set that off by saying thank you for MPPA's work during our ice storm, when we had Zeeland and Charlevoy and Harbor Springs come to our aid during our transmission failure and our ice storm and our blackout. Um, it was, it was those partnerships that were really, that were reinforced in terms of like, we are, we're playing in the right, on the right team.
Right.
So, but that being said, I also want to look to those regional partners like, um, uh, Brittany at Traverse City Light and Power, who came from Lansing, uh, this program and the sheer scale of what they're able to accomplish. And maybe they're operating with light and power boards as well. Maybe their structure is different. Like we don't have a DPW board here in terms of governing body, but, um, I would be hopeful that we could look to those regional partners for economies of scale and sharing in utilities. So the power between Charlevoy, Petoskey, Harbor Springs and Traverse City is really clear and apparent to me and how we source our energy and the cost of energy. But a volunteer renewable energy program is only going to get you so far because you have your early adapters, people that are willing to pay an extra 10% on their electric bill to sign up and subscribe to 100% renewable energy. We're not really going to get to that threshold until we start with a date and work backwards of how we're going to systematically accomplish that year by year by year.
Yeah.
So that being said, I'm hopeful that maybe where there is a will, there is a way. And I've also been told to rely or we're relying on updated technology and that battery storage is going to be a huge game changer for us. And I have heard whisperings of that technology coming to utility scale fruition. And so while I remain hopeful, I'm also concerned about how we are systematically getting there.
Yeah. So I think I'm going to summarize what you said. And I think, um, one of the things that we need to do better at is providing a better visual so you can see the implementation to get to where you want to go to. And we need to do, we do provide these, well, they'll call multi-year budgets, but we probably need to provide something more, um, uh, tied to your own city goals. So you can see them out beyond the five years. Um, and by, absolutely. We, I mean, we don't have like some kind of, we're a nonprofit organization too. I don't get paid more to buy power through MPPA. So if we can help facilitate an arrangement with Traverse City or Charlevoy or anybody up here, um, we'd love to do that. Obviously affordability is always on our minds. And so if a project's going to cost significantly more than, um, alternatives, you know, we have an obligation to share that with you because that could impact your own rates to your, your retail customers here. So those are the things that we have to be communicative about, but in the end it's your decision. It's not ours. And we just try to help facilitate it.
Joe, Mr. Napkau. Thanks for the presentation. Um, and I'm not completely up to speed to this. So some of this might be ignorance. There isn't a day that goes by that I don't hear and read articles about the hyperscalers and AI building their little mini, um, mini power plants.
Yeah.
And, and nuclear, the, the smaller nuclear. I'm, I'm kind of curious, what are the nuclear in, in your whole thought process?
Sure. Well, none of them have done that yet. Um, the only thing you've seen them do is contract with old nuclear plants that they're restarting. And there's only a handful of those really honestly that are capable of doing that. And they're pretty much all taken. Um, small modular reactors is what you're talking about is sort of the next phase. Um, nobody's done one yet. There's a lot of talk. There's been a lot of projects. I'm not saying they're not going to get done, but, um, they're not going to happen fast. That's in any meaningful way. It's 10 to 12 years away. So that's a long time. Um, actually, none of these projects, actually, all they have on site, most of them are either, uh, diesel or gas fire generators and batteries. That's what they have on site, but they're relying on the grid for their normal power. And quite frankly, that's the big argument you're seeing everywhere right now is there's not enough of that around for them. So something's got to give, you know, something's got to give. And I think the got to give part is going to be, there's not going to be as many data centers as people are planning until the power supply catches up. That's the give part.
Mr. Moore.
So I just have two questions following up on your presentation. One, it indicated that a business objective was renewable energy from 15% to 50% by 2030.
Yeah.
Can you speak to the feasibility of this?
That's becoming more challenging. I mean, you're at 33% now. So thankfully you're all, you're very close to, you're closer to 50 than, than you were in 2015, like significantly closer. But it gets harder here for a couple of reasons. Um, one is the, we were getting much greater amount of reliability per megawatt, but there's been some rule changes and it's going to get into some highly technical stuff that bore people silly here, but we're not getting as much reliability per megawatt of installed solar as we used to. So that's slowing us down. The other thing is prices have just gone way up. And, uh, so now there's an affordability issue. So how do we get there? Um, well, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. Fortunately, um, we have some other vehicles. Renewable energy credits can be bought, of course, but that's from existing- Renewable energy credits can be bought, of course, but that's from existing facilities. We're going to have to do some more renewables, definitely within the next two years. If we want to have it online by 2030 to meet the 50%. Now, there are exceptions under the legislation. We don't want to use them. So, but right now. We're kind of at this hysteria phase of the business. And so going into this market today to try to do a deal. Just has not seemed like it's a really good idea. Now what we may end up doing is just doing a smaller project. So then again, we're not trying to hit home runs here. So if, if it is a high price and prices fall to that, we're not going to be. Sulking and regretting it. I think that's what we've been doing. We've just taken a little bit of a pause. I, I don't want to. Bore you here, but we were putting a brand new system. In at MPPA, a much more sophisticated portfolio management system. So we can really analyze. These intermittent and battery resources and it's been a year long process. We're going live with it in 26. So we want to get that done and then we're back out into, okay, what projects do we build or, or buy? To get to that 50% number. Yeah.
Thank you. And then the second question is just the degree of accuracy of these capacity forecasts. I mean specifically relative to Petoskey.
Yeah.
It looked like there was a lot of swing there.
As far as Petoskey, I mean, we rely a lot on your city to tell us what you see. Of your own retail customers in the future, new construction projects, whatever your, all the information. We have a very, very. Uh, dynamic econometric project, process we go through for your load forecast. And we simulate all sorts of different futures and we come up with a, a one that's within. A high confidence level. The marketplace is really struggling with load forecasting right now, really struggling. And that's because of what we've just been talking about. There's all these new, I mean, one example, we have our two largest members, Holland and Lansing, both. We're going to put automotive battery project, plants in their, in their cities. That was a year and a half ago. They're both not happening now. Now they've been converted to um, battery for the utility industry. So. Suddenly all the load forecasts that they had given us, and these are big companies, GM sold out their partnership in Lansing. I mean, things are changing very rapidly in the industry right now. So yeah, forecasting is very hard.
Thank you.
We have uh, landfill about 3%, something like that. Gas is correct. That's very, that's very expensive at right now. It's well over a hundred dollars.
Yes, yeah.
Something running around $50 a megawatt.
Landfill projects or unfortunately landfill projects were grossly expensive. Um, a few years ago, unfortunately now they're less. They're still expensive, but they're less expensive than we're relative to the alternatives because we were doing, like I said, solar at 35, $45 a megawatt hour. Now it's 80, $85. So. Yeah. We are restructuring those, those contracts, by the way, and dropping their prices down in the sixties.
This megawatt was, I think, two years ago was 95.
Yes, those deals were done back in 2008, before my time, not that I'm blaming the previous, but uh, and uh, they had. Massive escalators in them. So um, fortunately, most of them are gone away this next year.
The nuclear, aren't we investing more in nuclear?
We're not, but. Well, because they're, they're gigantic projects. None of them are proven yet and just not scaled yet. Will we? I'm sure we'll look at it, but. Um, and we, we might end up buying power from a nuclear plant. We could do that. But as far as building one, I mean, they're just massive projects, tons of money. Yeah, sure. And, and we're exploring those opportunities, but there's, there's, yes, Lindsay.
Quickly, uh, so the white elephant in the room is like every utility company around us in the universe is doing rate hikes. And I know that we are undergoing in the next year or so, a study determined, um. I've always been of the belief that we try to keep our utilities. Not at a subsidized rate, but how much can our community warrant an increase in utility costs?
Yeah.
Considering our most vulnerable residents. And then um. I also wanted to ask some questions about like biomass and is that considered a renewable energy and. Could we increase the capacity of? The biomass facilities in our region. I mean, I know that it's also regulated by Eagle. They're only allowed to burn so much, but we were. City of Petoskey and Emmett County were great contributors to the biomass facility in Grayling run by Consumers Power because of our ice storm.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess I'm just wondering, um, your forecasts or predictions about the um, affordability and the accessibility and the renewability of biomass facilities.
Well, let me address your first point first. Thank you for, yes, our members have on average. Rates that are 15% lower than. Your competing. Investor and cooperative utilities, which is a great, and that's, that's an average. Obviously some have significantly lower, some have, and if by rate class, it's all different. But investing in your system, you got to have enough revenue coming in to continue to invest in your system. So your rates have to be set. Otherwise your system gets antiquated. Just like your house or any other piece of equipment. So rates have to be set. We're also very um. Involved now in our member ratemaking because we want to make sure that our members are creditworthy, you know, that they have strong financials. They have proper cash levels and reserves and debt service coverage ratios. And so. You need to make sure that your rates are set so all those financial metrics can, can be met. As it relates to biomass, and I mean there you're talking like wood, not methane, I'm presuming. Okay, TDR, yeah. Um, yeah, th- those projects so historically have been very uneconomic. A lot of them have closed. Um, there's only a few biomass projects left in the state and um. Now, you, you raise a really interesting point, like where is all the wood? That just got devoured here with that ice storm is, is something that I've been paying a lot of attention to, and I don't have a good answer for that. But I would think that that presents an opportunity as opposed to just getting chopped up and. Thrown in a heap somewhere that, that that wood supply. Uh, could be a source of economic benefit for everyone there. So, I mean, I don't know how many millions and millions of tons of wood were. Were uh, left on the ground from that ice storm, but it was, I know it was staggering. But historically, there's been challenges operating those plants. Um, their, their costs have been well over a hundred dollars a megawatt hour and I. I'm not an engineer. A biomass engineer, so I don't know all the reasons for that, but I can get that to you after.
And then there's also the other points that you kind of brought up, like. We've never explored fiber optics. And if that's an option to diversify our portfolio, to bring in more revenue, to have. Another.
That's awesome.
Utility as part of us. I mean, we would rely once again on, on your guidance.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's great. I mean, I know Traverse City's been actively putting fiber in and, and um. I haven't studied the math there, but I know that they've, they've felt it to be a big success. Uh, Holland has done the same. I think having more utility services underneath your umbrella here could be a great thing.
And then also like our wastewater treatment plant and aerobic digestion is another component.
Yeah.
Generating energy either to cover its own energetic costs or to supply extra decentralized energy.
Absolutely. I think you're going to see, you already have seen, I'm sure the transition from like. You've already seen are much more involved in what's going on inside of your system than historically. Back when I started MPPA even before that, it was, we were just like a wholesale provider. We, it was very different organization now. A lot of that's just because of the way the industry's changed and we really kind of have to be very involved in each other's business. Yours and ours and ours and yours in order to survive the complexities we're dealing with.
Anything else, council?
Sorry, I took up so much of your time. Okay. Thanks for having me.
We look forward to.
I'm sorry. It's been a while, but we have a lot of great people at MPPA beyond me and I'm happy they've come here. So.
I'm sure we're going to see more of you because I think we will probably be looking at strategic plans that will get us to the 2030.
Yes, you will, you will definitely, and we, yep.
You or your staff or somebody up here.
We have great staff and they will definitely be here. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Safe travels back home.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda and it's approval of the following. I asked for a proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following, the November 15th, November 17th, 2025, regular session. City council meeting minutes as well as knowledge of receipt of certain administrative transactions that have occurred since November 17th, 2025. Anybody have any questions or comments at this point? I'll entertain for a possible motion.
So moved.
Port. I have a motion from Mr. Moore, a second from Mr. Nobtrop. I go to Ms. Beck for roll.
Moore.
Aye.
Knacktrub.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Now, this is your chance for public comment. Uh, you'll step up, give us your name, come up to the mic, push the mic so it's green. And you'll have a few minutes to talk to council. I ask that you speak to council and not the audience in your presentation. Thank you.
Jimmy Gwet for this opportunity, Fred Harrington. Junior. 1111 Howard Street, Petoskey. I just want to read a resolution that we passed at the tribe. Uh, tribal resolution 11062501. Opposition to Petoskey's plan to move uh, war memorials out of Pennsylvania Park. Whereas the Wakanoxing Adawa Nation, known as a Little Traverse Bay Band of Adawa Indians. Getting blurry. And its citizens are vested in the inherent sovereignty and right of self governance. Little Traverse Bay Band of Adawa Indians is a federally recognized Indian tribe under public law 103324. And is party to numerous treaties with the United States and most recently of which being Treaty of Washington, March 28th, 1836, and the Treaty of Detroit, 1855. The city of Petoskey was named after a prominent Adawa figure, Ignatius Petoskey. The statue overlooks the Little Traverse Bay just over that way. The tribe and its citizens often use the city's parks and syst- park system for their events, including. The first festival by the bay and the water is life festival now. The city of Petoskey resides entirely within the boundaries of the tribe's treaty boundaries outlined in 1855 Treaty of Detroit. Multiple businesses in the city of Petoskey started with seed money from the tribe's community development financial institution, Northern Shores Loan Fund. Adawa warriors fought in the union, uh, fought with the union in the civil war as company K sharp shooters. Adawa warriors fought as American soldiers, sailors, Marines, merchant Marines, Coast Guard and airmen in every American conflict. Since the revolution, including but not limited to the Civil War, World War One, World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, Afghanistan. The tribe reveres its warriors as Ogitchidoc, the ones with the big heart. And celebrates them with special dances and songs at our events. The tribe and its citizens often use the city of Petoskey Park for their events. I put that in there twice, didn't I? For their events, including the first festival by the bay and the water is life festival. The city of Petoskey has memorialized its warriors killed in action during American conflicts in the town center, Pennsylvania Park. The names of Adawa warriors appear throughout Petoskey's war memorials. Most American cities, as do Boine City, Charlevoix, East Jordan, Boine City, Harbor Springs and Boine Falls. Display their patriotism with war memorials in their town center. The city of Petoskey has engaged the company to revise the, to revision Pennsylvania Park. This company envisions Pennsylvania Park without the war memorials that currently reside on the east side of the park. Therefore, be it resolved, Little Traverse Bay Band of Adawa Indians vehemently objects to any plans. That move the Petoskey's war memorials out of Pennsylvania Park and urges the city council to reject. Moving the memorials out of the Pennsylvania Park. It passed by a, a margin of seven, zero, uh, in favor opposed, two absent. And was signed by the uh, tribal chair. If I could, I'd like to. Give you the, this is a signed resolution.
Why don't you give it to Shane?
Probably because the court.
City manager. Oh, because that'll be documented in the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Big clutch.
She makes much.
People have to, now I know. People are probably that this isn't going to happen. But I haven't seen a book that says it won't happen yet. These things have a funny way of happening. That's what's going on.
Also, uh. Take a moment to tell you that the tribe starting a DPW and a possibility of a utility. And we look forward to working with the city and maybe. Um, MPPA to develop alternate power sources. Jimmy Gwet.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Uh, my name is Patrick Klein, uh, Vietnam veteran, and I am a, been involved with the uh. Monuments in the park since the beginning. I helped spearhead. With the help of all of the other organizations, the FFW, the American Legion, and of course, the Vietnam Veterans of America and uh, uh, Blue Star Mothers. To make that happen. And that was in the mid eighties. A lot of people. Who are here who want to change this weren't even around at that time. And at that one point during this particular point, they wanted to put our monument under the bridge. Because they thought that might be a more beneficial place. For whatever reason. That didn't happen. And uh, we've always had the support of the city council. And that's the reason we're there and still there. And the amount of work that has gone on to put those monuments there. And at no cost to the city, may I, I might add. And the people that were involved in putting that there, a lot of those people are gone now. It's unfortunate, but more importantly, that's become kind of a sacred ground. And if you walk through the park as we all have, I'm sure. And you look at those monuments and you look at those names on those monuments. Not only just the Vietnam, but the World War One and Two. And there's names from Afghanistan and uh, uh, the Gulf War. It really, it strikes home because a lot of those people. Were the, especially with World War One, those people were the beginning people. Those families were what started Petoskey. They were all connected. And I think it's important. And I'm not against any music venues. I think that's very important. We need that kind of thing in Petoskey to bring people together. But it doesn't have to be in Pennsylvania Park. At the opposite end of the park. There's lots of room. A bands, a, a, a band shell, that would be fantastic. There's no reason and you're at the point where people will walk. To a music venue, but they won't walk very far to see a monument. Because if it's already central, they will see it and it's beneficial to everybody in the community. And I'm here because I get phone calls and that's how it all started. Everybody is afraid, just like Fred said, things just happen, Petoskey for some reason. And uh. Believe me, I don't want to bring it anymore because maybe it's premature, you know, but I, the calls and the people have called me and talked to me. They're concerned. Uh, and I was put on an ad hoc committee to. Check in and, and I haven't heard a word from anybody. Uh, on what's going on, not even about the part about uh, taking a. Uh, they had some, you had, city, I think, had something in the. On the internet uh, for uh. People's advice or, you know, their thoughts on changing it. And everything that I had heard has always been on the negative side of changing it. Even the railroad tracks. Simply because if you think about it, why, what's Pennsylvania got to do with Petoskey? Well, Pennsylvania Railroad is who had that property. Well, Pennsylvania Railroad is who had that property to begin with, not excluding our Native Americans. But, uh, that's who put it there. We should, we, we should ought to, uh, maybe put a, a caboose there, do something to bring people to see some about our history of Petoskey up here, easy to walk to rather than down at the waterfront, you know, have more for it, that type of thing. The other thing I would suggest is that it's, it's a beautiful park, but you should be able to walk through that park and it should look like daylight. I mean, I know we just talked about energy here and what the costs are, but now with LED lighting, it's a lot less expensive to light up. And something like that would make it a whole lot easier for people to, to enjoy that through the, in the evenings. And a nice stroll through the park is always good. But that, that's the reason that I am here on behalf of the Viet, veterans, uh, Vietnam Veterans of America and other, and the American Legion and the FFW and other veterans in the community. And, uh, everything that I've been told, nobody wants to change it. And if, if, if something changes, I would sure like to know, and just exactly like Fred has said, a vote from the city council saying that they will not be changed, that will not be tampered with, makes a big difference and makes everybody feel a lot better. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time? There being none, we'll go to the city manager's update and I turn it over to our city manager horn.
If I can, these both these things. So I wanted to take a few moments to celebrate some staff, uh, birthdays and work anniversaries for the month of December. Uh, John Tompkins Parks and Rec celebrates a birthday, December fifth. Uh, Mayor Murphy, uh, celebrates a birthday, um, next week, December eleventh.
That was canceled.
It's canceled due to a lack of interest?
Give it all day.
Okay. Yeah. Jeffrey George Parking, uh, December eleventh. Uh, Bob Nichols Public Works, December fourteenth. Mary Sue Prantara Library, December fourteenth. Uh, Scott Goziak Public Safety, December seventeenth. Amy Tweaton Downtown Manager, December twenty-third. And Tyler Hart, uh, Parks and Rec, December twenty-fifth, Christmas, Christmas baby. Um, December work anniversaries this month, Ed Smith, Parks and Rec, twenty-nine years with the city this month. And Larry Donovan Public Safety celebrates twenty-four years with the city this month. Uh, public meetings coming up, um, Petoskey Youth Advisory Council meets next Monday, uh, December eighth, uh, at six o'clock. That's here in this room this month. Uh, Parks and Rec, uh, Commission also meets on Monday, December eighth, in the community room at six o'clock. Uh, the Board of Review will gather for an organizational meeting on Wednesday, December tenth. Uh, that's at three o'clock in the afternoon. Um, and then the Art Commission next week on Thursday will meet for their monthly meeting on December eleventh. That meeting has been changed, time has been changed to eight AM, um, in the morning. Wanted to bring, um, our residents aware again, it's, it's that time of year where we are, um, regulating, uh, parking, on-street parking due to our winter parking regulations, which obviously started today, uh, which is kind of apropos for the weather we're, we've had over the last few days and plan to have maybe this evening and tomorrow. So as, as hopefully all of our residents know by now, um, we, we rotate parking on, on eve, on even dated dates based on, um, uh, your address. So on even dated dates of, and the calendar, vehicles must be parked on the even side, addressed side of the street. And then the same on odd dated dates. Uh, those folks should be rotating back and forth. We, for the first, um, couple of weeks, obviously, we're, we'll educate as much as possible, but it's very important for our plow truck drivers to be able to clear appropriately on both sides to, from curb to curb. So we ask for the public's, uh, participation, um, and adherence to this so we can clean our streets effectively and not have to continually weave in and out of, uh, traffic, um, and leave uh, voids in our plowing operations. So again, I sell, we did this last meeting, but just to, as another reminder, a few events coming up the next couple of weekends. This Friday, December fifth, we have our annual holiday open house. Um, very well-attended event, uh, we'll light the, uh, new Christmas tree as well for the first time. So that's very exciting as well. Following next Saturday for the holiday parade, this would be December thirteenth at ten AM. And, uh, the routes are on our, uh, website as well and downtown's website, uh, as well. Also wanted to let parents know as they may want to circle the December twelfth on their calendar, we will be providing a parents' night out. This is, will be at, this will be at the Winter Sports Park Lodge, um, from five to eight PM on December twelfth. Uh, our, our Parks and Rec Kids Camp coordinators and helpers will be, uh, facilitating this opportunity. And so we ask folks if they're interested to register at the Petoskey, uh, rec desk, um, on our website and take advantage of that, that's ages, uh, six to twelve on December twelfth. Have it answer any questions you may have. Oh, then the mayor, I think, had one additional, uh, comment.
Any, um, just questions for the ma- city manager? Uh, Petoskey Holiday Light Contest, fourth annual is coming up. Uh, if you have lights on, you want, have it looked at. Uh, Friday and Saturday, December twelfth and thirteenth, we're encouraging people to make sure and have their lights on. They're from six till nine. Uh, I've talked with Quanis and they've wanted to be involved with this, uh, so the Quanis members will be driving around and taking a look at covering off thirty-one point five miles of city streets. I was told we'll divide it up to make sure it all gets covered. And we'll come up with, you end up getting a big yard sign in your front yard that looks something like this, but will be large-sized. Um, and you also will, you get a one hundred dollar gift certificate to a neighbor, uh, a, uh, restaurant in the area as well, so. There are, the categories will be listed on the city website, uh, and probably in the newspaper as well. And so, any questions? Hey, any, does public have any questions for the city manager for his update? There being none, we go to appointments, since consideration appointments, two boards, downtown management board and the tax increment finance, our TIF board. I'm, I'm gonna let you know that there are two, three people. One is Drew Smith, uh, for the downtown management board. He, uh, has lived in Petoskey for six years, though he grew up here, went away, came back. He's a member of the, uh, New and Rotary Board of Directors for that. Um, very passionate about Petoskey, um, works hard for it. So I bring forward Drew Smith.
May I move to reappoint Drew Smith?
If I have a second.
I'll be happy to second the motion, mayor.
I have a motion from Mr. Shields and a second from Ms. Walker. I go to Ms. Beck for roll.
Hills.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Knacktrub.
Aye.
Murphy.
Yes, aye.
Demore, sorry, Demore.
Aye.
It passes five zero. Congratulations Drew Smith, wherever you are. Next, I bring to you on the tax increment finance, that board meets twice a year with the, uh, Kendall Klingonsmith is the, uh, staff member that runs that, uh, and it approves TIF tax increment finances of the city. And I'm bringing forward Clark Smith. Uh, he's served on the board for quite a few years. He says he's continuously lived here for seventy-five, so I'm pretty sure he was born and raised here since his mother was my kindergarten teacher. I move, uh, ask for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Demore and a second from
Second motion.
Mr. Shields. I ask McBeck, Ms., uh, Sarah Beck for roll.
Demore.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Knacktrub.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye. The last one I bring forward is Nan Casey. Uh, Nan actually probably lives closer to City Hall than anybody, just a couple of doors out of the way. Um, so, uh, she's an attorney and she feels like, uh, it's a, brings her expertise to this board. She's served the board for the last, I appointed her, I think, six or eight years ago. Uh, so I bring forward her name. Uh, she's involved with Brother Dan's Pantry and Hospice. Does anybody wish to make a motion? Mr. Nobtrop?
I'd be glad to make a motion to, uh, appoint Nan Casey.
I'll be happy to second the motion, mayor.
I have a motion for Mr. Nobtrop and a second from Ms. Walker, and I'm gonna go to Ms. Beck for roll.
Knacktrub.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Demore.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Ms. Casey, Nan Casey, if you can hear us, you're on the board. Now we go to, we have, uh, two more items on the thing. One is old business and that's a discussion on possible adoption of a proposed resolution approving the city's proposed two thousand twenty-six, uh, annual budget. And I'm gonna turn that over to city manager Horn, who's met with all of you over the last week.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, this kind of, uh, continues our ongoing discussion on the twenty-six per, two thousand, two thousand twenty-six proposed budget. Uh, we presented that at the November seventeenth meeting, um, went through a presentation, uh, took your questions and comments, feedback. Uh, we did schedule a public hearing for this evening, which was done. Um, I did, uh, Audrey and I, Finance Director Audrey and myself, uh, met with, uh, each of you, uh, kind of accumulated your comments, feedback. I distributed, distributed that out back to you. Um, so just looking forward to continued feedback and discussion and potential adoption of the proposed twenty twenty-six, um, budget.
Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? We can move, otherwise a possible adoption. Mr. Moore.
It's more of a question, do we need to delineate those items?
I did print this off in case you didn't have those, um. Again, I tried to, I tried to capture your thoughts. If I did not adequately do that or there's things missing, obviously you can bring that forward this evening as well. It appears there's, there's some consensus on um, keeping the fifty thousand in the budget for the wheelway kind of bypass surveying and design based on, um, again, based on your feedback. If that's different, that's, that's fine. That money is already in the, in the budget, so we won't really need to do anything, um, with that, if that's the consensus. There was a, an, an item that, uh, I believe council member Knacktrub brought up, um, initially, um. He, he thought, and I don't want to speak for you necessarily, but, um, you thought that maybe doing both marina projects, uh, would be prudent just based on some of our electrical issues we've had at the marina. So we brought that up as a potential as well, adding the Pier B electrical upgrade project, um, doing both that project and the dredging project within the marina using, uh, the restricted, uh, fund balance that the marina currently has, which is around, uh, Audrey, two, 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 two point one million or something like that. Um, so there is funds available to do both projects. The question became, if we're only able to get a grant, one grant, a hun- for a hundred and fifty thousand, so for half of it, should we space those projects out so we can get that a hundred and fifty thousand? Not, not that grants are given, but this, this usually has been pretty well-accepted. So potentially getting one project done in twenty-six, another project done in twenty-seven, both with that hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant attached to it. That's an option, or we proceed, it's likely that we're not gonna get a grant for both of those projects in one, in one year. So that's the question, I guess. And certainly we agree that both projects need to be done. The question, I guess, is should we, should we space them so we can qualify for an additional grant opportunity?
Mr. Nobtrop?
Just to clarify that, I, when, when we met, I thought that we were, we would get fifty percent reimbursement on both, but
Yeah, not
that's not true.
I don't, not sure if I conveyed that or not. If I did, I apologize, but it's likely we'll only get one. Uh, so I don't know if that changes your thought.
It changes mine a little bit.
Which one is the most important?
But not known for sure at this time. My recommendation would be to put both in the budget if we're gonna apply for both of those grants. If we only get one, then we can make that determination at the time.
That makes sense.
Does that
Put that in motion then for the, for the, uh,
Yeah.
for the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, ear noted that we're approving both with the understanding that i- if one goes and the other doesn't, we drop the other.
Correct.
Right. That's right.
So that would be in the budget stated.
Do we need to do a motion to do that?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll keep that.
The big picture.
Yeah.
There's a few other things, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, um, let's see, um, there's the Ward Four Sub Area Plan. Uh, that was mentioned by one, two.
Two mentioned to keep it in and two mentioned to move it to twenty-seven, and I think Mr. Knacktrub, it wasn't on his, um,
Radar.
Yeah. Well.
Had a question, are we, can we ask a question?
Oh, please, let's talk about it.
So, so the, the, it, it currently is in the twenty-six budget.
Yeah.
My, my general question ab- about this is we seem to do a lot of plans and, 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 and what would we be doing? What would we be losing if we put it into twenty-seven? Has this been kicked down the road before?
No, no.
But what would we be, what would we be losing if we delayed it a year relative to everything else we're doing and, and the other planning?
I'd rather ask it, what will we gain, what will we gain by doing it?
A live study at the initiation of a major development being in place. Given another year, then we'd know more.
We're talking of parking and stuff, our, our trip.
Talking about a sub-plan for that Standish Avenue.
Well, my thing is
Thank you.
I, here's how, I, I read this. We do not know what the traffic patterns are gonna be at this point. And would it behoove us to wait until next, for one year to get us a, a feel for what, what are the, what are the patterns of, of traffic? Are they, are, are, do we find that everybody's going up Sheridan Street and now Sheridan is the one we really need to look at? Or is it a going out River Road and it's the, the s- South Standish? Or is it Howard? Where, where is this traffic going? Cause isn't this more or less a traffic?
No.
No.
Not all.
Much, it's much more than
But it is a traffic.
That's what is
Is a component. I feel like that component would best give us some view of, after we have actual, actual cars on the road. Instead of guesstimating, oh, two hundred and four, let's see, twenty will go that way, ten this way, a hundred this way. And so if that's a part of this process, I think it would behoove us to have more information, and I don't think we can have it until we have live action.
Just, just to clarify, sorry, uh, I wanted to clarify something real quick. That fifty-five thousand was removed, uh, out of the twenty-six budget, so if you want it back in, that would be an add. One of the things we could do as well, as Audrey mentioned, I, I'm really somewhat confident that we can get some RRC support funding for this, so we could do it, we could put it in the budget. And if we get some, uh, grant support, it's a go, it's a green light. If, if it's not in the cards for twenty-six from a, from a grant standpoint, maybe we, we hit the pause and that could be an option.
Mr. Moore.
For me, it's not so much a grant issue or a funding issue, it's more of a timing issue. Cause as this was explained to me, it was like looking at the corridor as a whole, of which traffic was a portion of it. And so along those lines, I think holding a bit to see how it all settles would be a better plan, so we have a better picture. That's, that was my thinking in moving it to twenty-seven, it didn't have to do with grant funding. Thank you.
But, but grant money is good if we get fifty-five thousand or whatever.
I love first money.
Mr. Shields.
Uh, just some thoughts on that, i- is there value in being proactive though versus waiting till things settle to, to direct how we as a community want that corridor to look versus being behind the ball? Um, this, this, I, my understanding of a sub-plan, I meant to do a little more homework on that, so I don't know a lot, what's involved, but But my understanding is it's a way to get ahead of, of, of designing a, an area of growth to reflect our, our community's goals. So it's to me that, it's an opportunity to get that funding, get it rolling right away. Why, why wait? Um, it feels like we're maybe behind the ball.
Mr. Moore.
Oh, I love when Mr. Shields and I respectfully debate things. I think it's important to have information that can inform what's gonna happen. And we're sort of in a phase right now where we don't, we don't have that information. So I think being proactive is a really good thing, but I think being informed with more information is always helpful as well.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, seeing that this is, um, Ward Four and my very specific neighborhood, I also wanted to say like, we, at some point, we were kind of like, oh, woulda, shoulda, coulda, we should've added that on to the developers' like task of, of him bearing, or them bearing the cost of a traffic study as a stipulation to Maple Block. But we didn't do that and that's okay. So reflecting upon that, it's also a designated neighborhood enterprise zone, so I really wanna lean into the policies that we've passed. And, um, and as designating that, with John Ico Angeli's recommendation that that become a neighborhood enterprise zone, that also opens up upper, other opportunities for investment and grant opportunities. And I agree with Shane that if M D C through redevelopment-ready communities, if you can piggyback a study that's very much related to a previous redevelopment-ready community property, which would be Maple Block, like, are there possibilities of layering other next opportunities and looking at that like very holistically as this new neighborhood enterprise zone? So I'm in favor of, of expanding our lens of how we view that and whether that could be grant money or promised budgeted money for twenty twenty-six. I'm kind of on the fence. I'm like, yes, this year and addition to twenty twenty-seven, so, um, yeah.
Mr. Knoptr.
So I, when I asked Shane about this, you sent me Shane, um, the scope of, of, of this kind of a plan from Beckett and, and Raider. And it, and, and I, I'm, I'm hearing and agreeing with this, the traffic stuff, but there's a heck of a lot more going on in, in this plan than the traffic.
Yeah.
You know, and to me, a lot of stuff is, is relevant. So, I mean, I'm personally, okay, I think it's important to do, whether it's important to do in twenty-six, twenty-seven, I'm kinda can go either way on it, but it, it's really good stuff in here. That is pretty relevant.
City Manager, do you have an opinion on this?
Um, the reason I took it out was I, just to have more data, more information, let, let the two large projects in that corridor kind of materialize. Again, Maple Block will be built out, um, in July, so we're already halfway through the year. Let that all come to fruition. Let's see and monitor kind of how it's going. I think we'll have good data to insert into this plan, you know, in twenty-seven based on, um, based on these projects kind of coming to the finish line.
That's pretty relevant to me.
Um, let's talk about whether it's in or out. Which one, is it in twenty-six, twenty-seven? You know, um, three people saying twenty-six, three people saying twenty-seven. What, we, you know, let's give the city man, let's, let's give the city, we need to take a stand on this, so.
Give you your, Mayor. We'll go down the line. Would you like us to?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-six.
Actually, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six.
Next.
Mayor.
Mr. Shields.
I was just, I was gonna move on to, um...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was going to the next.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, yeah.
Go for it.
Um, so I, I do wanna just make the public case for removing the Little Travis Wheelway bypass surveying design study. Uh, and, and that, that is because it's not about this study. Um, it, it's about diverting attention and slowing momentum away from what the community is, in my opinion, actually asking for. Um, it's delaying the progress towards fixing the wheelway where it is. So even the study comes back and gives us another one million dollar, probably more than that, um, ass, cost estimate for putting the wheelway back along the highway. And then the community, as I feel like we're, if we went that route, would be kind of, um, not reading the room so well as, as a board to what the community is asking for. We'd be back to community angst against us, spending money on a study to do something they don't want. So I, I, it's not about the study, I just feel like that, that money could be better used and it's, and it's, again, just slowing momentum where we have some momentum now. Let's, let's put that momentum to where the community wants it to go. Um, and so taking that fifty thousand dollars out, I, I'd also recommending removing, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the re, uh, wheelway resurfacing and, and experimenting as for a year, what, what it happens, what that looks like without putting that money towards it. Um, a- and then putting that money towards, uh, what, what, put it towards, I, I'm suggesting, uh, the philanthropic or development officer, and let me just publicly say a few points what that looks like. Um, you know, some of those job responsibilities would be developing a, a fundraising strategy, uh, and annual work plan that's aligned with city priorities. It involved building and stewarding relationships with philanthropic organizations and door networks and corporate partners, as well as researching, writing and submitting grants, uh, to support the various community pri- city priorities and, and assisting the, the various department heads. Um, and then coordinating those private contributions for public project, projects, ensuring compliance of the city's gift acceptance policy, which is one of the very first policies that's part of in this body. Um, so, so that, that's something I, 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 I'm not sensing there's support for that, but I think, uh, communicating that out and for, uh, this body to continue to think about that in the future as a way to, um, so multiply the fact, the rate of return on this investing in a position like this would have, uh, potentially implications for not having to, uh, allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars yearly for resurfacing. Or, um, it can jumpstart, help jumpstart things like, uh, assistance with unhoused or, um, you, you name it, city priorities. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Are you asking if there's an interest in doing this?
If anybody is so interested in joining me on these ideas, please, please speak up.
Is there somebody, do we have three votes to put that on there? I guess that's the question. Is there anybody here support putting that on this budget?
What's the that? The last one you mentioned?
So I...
The, the philanthropy or development director, is that what we're discussing?
I think so.
Okay, thank you for clarity.
Ms. Walker.
So from what I understand, Derek is suggesting the, to, to fund the development officer or philanthropic director through the removal of the fifty thousand and the hundred and fifty thousand for the Little Travis Wheelway at like an offset? Is that what you're talking?
Yeah, my, my direct request would be to make space in the budget for that potential to then have the city manager explore it and then bring it up to this, um, you know, once, once that develops further, uh, this body could then weigh in if, if city manager so chooses. But there would be a, a place within the budget, uh, for that potential.
It wouldn't be up to city manager to bring it forward, it would be the city council. Mr. Snobtr.
Just a, just a, I guess a, a comment. I, 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 I get the merits of this, but it's a permanent position with annual cost over and over and over again. The hundred and fifty thousand dollar resurfacing, from what I understand, has been there, but we don't always use it. And it's, it's to fix, it's to fix things as we need it along the railway.
No, it's...
Or the wheelway.
Yes, it is.
Am I wrong on that?
Well, we do use it and it's, it's, it's section by section as we resurface the wheelway, we go systematically further, further north. And we use it every year.
It's called maintenance and I don't think it goes north, I think it goes to where it's needed.
We, we did not use it in twenty-five.
Okay.
Because we were, we're partnering with Bay Harbor and we will partner with Bay Harbor for the next phase. Um, uh, they just didn't have their plans together in time to, to go out for bid and get the project moving. So we did not spend a hundred and fifty in twenty-five.
Thank you, sorry.
But normally we do.
But normally, yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
So this money goes back to general fund? The hundred and fifty for this year?
It just wasn't spent, so.
Spent, so, right.
Mm-hmm. But a position is, like, this is an ongoing cost and we don't know what that costs.
Ms. Walker.
And any suggestions for changes in staffing absolutely goes to the city manager. So what Derek was saying was correct. Like, it goes to the city manager for evaluation and exploration. It also goes to probably like a legal body, right? Our legal counsel as well, but ultimately you are the decision maker in terms of your staff.
But, but you're approving the budget without, without money in the budget. I don't really have authority to add position to the budget.
It's, it's our responsibility. He's, he, if there's no money, he's happy, he does no hiring. So do we wanna hire that position, make that available or not? It's obvious if we said, this is what we want you to use this money for, the city manager is gonna follow the lead of city council. So is there, is there three people supporting doing this? Okay, moving on. So it will go to, to the... Twenty-seven?
We'll go to twenty-seven.
We'll stay with what, where we're at with it.
Yeah.
Ms. Walk, Ms. Demore.
Um, I just wanted to speak to the fifty thousand dollars for the Little Travis Wheelway bypass project. I think this is extremely important. I feel like our first duty is to advance safety. And what exists now is not safe. I also think that making efforts toward both routes is not mutually exclusive. There's no reason that as we try to advance this, this route on the north side of the roadway, that community members who are interested to undertake fundraising for the Miracle Mile Route can continue to do that. So I fully support keeping that fifty thousand dollars in the budget and, um, in recognition of the importance of advancing safety. Thank you.
I agree with you, Ms. Demore. Um, it's about safety at this point. I totally support fixing the wheelway, the Miracle Mile, which I think Roger Bannister ran that back in fifty-three. But I, I think that it's very important for us to, to do the safety piece as well. So I think it's, it's a two-piece thing. Uh, I, I'm sure that if the money came available to do the bigger project, this council would jump for it. Mr., Mr. Shields.
Thanks, Mayor. And, and Ms. Demore, I just respectfully push back on, on that narrative of safety. I, I, I'm not, definitely not opposed, I definitely am for safety. Safety is clearly a priority, as is listening to our community members, uh, and a community asset. And I, I, I challenge the narrative that it is, you can do both. I, of course you can do both, but if you're spending, if we are choosing to spend a million plus dollars on a paved wheelway up along the highway, that loses, that kills any momentum for, um, fundraising for something that, um, goes down, uh, below where the city has taken a lead for, in a great way and doesn't need to do the whole thing, but the city has continued to be a lead. I think it sends a mixed message to then spend lots of money, uh, for the, the, uh, the wheelway to make it safe. Whereas we could take that fifty thousand dollars and, and invest in more protection and bollards in, in a faster way, potentially if the state works with us, um, and, versus spending, uh, for a study that then, that safety that we're, we're, we're looking for is not gonna be another couple of years potentially, um, to come, come for. So I think if we're, we're talking about safety, let's put that fifty thousand dollars towards a bollards and a hundred percent support that.
Mr. Knoptr.
You know, I also agree with what, what Tina said and, and I, on the safety issues, but I also have another, probably equally important, and although how can you have anything more important than safety, is the fact that we, we've got, all the people came, we got a plan, twenty million dollar plan, there seems to be support, but I'm skeptical of seeing that. And, and if that's gonna be a two-year thing, a five-year thing, or ten-year thing, eleven, fifteen-year thing, it seems like we should be at least creating a plan B. And I don't think it takes away the momentum. It, it's, if the, if the private group, if the private group that we talked about, they start making actions and they start getting some pledges going and they start acting on it, I'm all for doing that, cause I want the Miracle Mile too, personally. I mean, this goes right into what I, I, I live that too. And, and so I, I, I think we need to have a plan B developed. And, and to me, it's not putting more bollards on that darn curve. It just is an awful thing, but that's, that's me.
I don't think the bollards, they can't be permanently put into the roadway, can they? They have to be where a car were to hit it, it's, it's gonna like, be able to go to the shoulder. So I don't know what they could put in there that would, what would you put in there that's gonna make it safer with bollards and, bollards than they are now? I, I don't see it. So do I have, so at this point, I don't hear the support to, to move, uh, funding out of the survey and the design fifty thousand dollars for the, the wheelway at this point?
Yeah, I'm not hearing that either.
Okay. You have other things, Mr. Shields?
I would also encourage us to, um, when you, when you think about a, a city planner position, uh, and potentially, uh, ask Manager Horn if that's something that would need to be, if that's gonna be an option for mid-year, that should we allocate a portion of the budget to, um, to include that?
Yeah, I think the last few years, we had some flexibility in the budget to, to pursue that. I think we ended up taking off, taking that out in twenty-six. So we would have to do a budget amendment if that was something that council wanted to do as we got into twenty-six, or we can put funds in the budget, you know, ahead of that. Um, and I thought we heard, I thought what I heard was, let's get through the zoning work, um, maybe evaluate that mid-year, um, with, with city council at that time. If that's the case, we could, we could always, uh, do a budget amendment.
Absolutely.
And, uh, move in that direction if that was the concurrence of city council.
I support that because I, I wanna see, I wanna see what happens in the next four or five months as we go through this zoning, uh, the support, the expertise that we get from the city planner. I wanna see, I wanna see their department, how it responds to this zoning that we're going to go through. And I think that will give us a better picture. And I, I, I have no problem with going and, and putting a, uh, amendment to, to the, to the budget in the middle of the year if we decide to go a different route with that and to actually go out for a call. But I, I'd like to see us start with where we are here with what we have. We've ridden this horse this far, I wanna ride this horse to, through the zoning piece. Mr. Knoptr.
I, I, I agree with you, Mayor. And, and what was compelling during, during the meeting we had, that, that Lindsay and I were at, was the notion of the increased customer service by having more availability in the building on this. And to me, that, that, that's always a lot of questions and it would be nice to be a little bit more responsive. So it makes sense to revisit that after the zoning.
Okay.
Stuff is done.
Anything else on that? Anything else, Mr. Shields? No? Does anybody else have something that was not addressed on your list? Mr. Knoptr.
I, I would, I would like to at least talk about the public safety officer position. And, and it was, and, and if, and I, and I, I get the notion about revisiting this in mid-year and I, I'm, I'm, I would support that, but I wanna reiterate the fact that at least my involvement or my exposure on this council is Bear River Recreation Area needs patrolling. And, and I made, I kind of facetiously made a comment that I'd rather have a scheduled patrol in those, in the high-risk areas than people, than a, than a scheduled patrol going around Bay Harbor just for optics. And, you know, and I'm, I'm Bay Harbor as well. So I would, I would love to figure out a way to make sure we are having regular patrols of high-risk areas and not only be in there when there's a call on it. And, and if that meant we needed to have a public service officer added, we ought to be doing that. But that's the only thing I wanted to, to say. Otherwise, I tend to agree with a mid-year, um, re, reevaluation of that.
Mr. Moore.
Um, so I fully support this idea. I just would defer to the city manager as far as an assessment of when you think, you know, is this thing we should go ahead with now or wait and assess?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't wanna sound like I'm kicking the can down the road, but we do have a couple retirements in, in first quarter twenty-six that will likely impact some of our operations. I, I really haven't had an in-depth conversation with Director Carr on, uh, Councilmember Knoptr's, um, uh, kind of dedicated patrolling in that area. kind of dedicated patrolling in that area, how how we can structure that. So we need to have, kind of have that conversation of of how, if we did create a new position, how much time could we devote to um those areas, the wheelway, um kind of those busy areas in the summer where we get some calls on. And likely that'll just continue as as more of the e-bike stuff kind of comes out. And we get a lot of, lot of complaints about speed and safety on the wheelway with with this type of technology. So it does, it's going to require more, us to devote more time in those areas for sure. I just need to, we just need to have that operational discussion on what that could look like. And I, we really haven't had that conversation quite yet, so I think if we can get some time, get through a few retirements, potentially look at this again mid-year to see what this look could look like, and we can have more conversation about what that, kind of that job description could entail.
I think we need to, with that, and I think we do need the time to take a look at this the next, this next year. I think elec- uh electric bikes, e-bikes are becoming a big issue in this city. Uh, and I think they should be addressed. Um, and I think that should be a part of the whole discussion on public safety and the hiring. Um, I I think we need to take a look at that. Uh, that would be my biggest priority for hiring another officer would be not necessarily riding around in a car looking to ticket people or to those type of emergencies, but it sounds like those are covered. But I think it's the public safety as far as e-bikes go, uh walkability, rideability, that type of stuff that I think we really need to address with public safety coming up. Mister Moore.
So just to circle back here for clarity to the city manager, you're suggesting we don't put it in the budget now and we wait to reassess it mid-year.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, I'm just asking to hold tight for now. It it could be. Uh, you know, we have two PSOs that come back to us, I shouldn't say, um, not PS, they are PSOs, but um school resource officers that come back into the mix in the summer. Could one of those potentially be more focused on um what Councilmember Knobtrop is is asking? So I I just need to have those operational questions and and discussions with the director.
I I think those two officers are, one specifically is is very well-suited for working with the public on on in in the face of public on bicycles, et cetera. Having seen what he does at the high schools and the, working with schools that, you know, I I I say do your checking and get back with us. Anything else on the list, Miss DeMore?
Well, I just have one that's not on the list, and it's probably a subject for discussion. But I wonder if we might revisit this funding percentage for MERS. I'm not saying we should increase it. I'm just thinking it would be a good thing to revisit going forward. Um, I don't know what others' thoughts are on.
Do we have anything that we're going to pay above what 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 our requirements are right now?
Yes, it's in the budget.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Above and beyond.
As opposed to like the million dollars that we were paying in previous.
Yeah, we were doing a million, I think, for two, three years.
Six years, and then we dropped down three years ago to six hundred and then four fifty and four fifty, five. I was just gonna call. But we have, we have dropped down, yes.
I was just more referencing the fact that the goal of ninety percent funding had been met and had been met for a while. And perhaps it should be revisited to see if we want to give ourselves a different goal to try to to reach. Again, I don't think it's necessarily.
Five, we're putting in five?
No, it was five years.
Five years of a hundred thousand. Okay.
No, a million.
Five years of a million.
Started in two thousand seventeen.
We're about six point six million above and beyond over the last seven years, whatever it's been.
I think our total fund balance with that though is three point nine million.
Unfunded liability.
Funded right now or unfunded for. Retirement for those. It's three point nine.
And I think in the action planner, you were maybe going to, was in the action plan or when was that established, the ninety percent? Was that?
I think that was a twenty one, twenty twenty one action plan. So as we reimagine that in twenty six, I think that certainly could be a priority of the new council to give us that direction on where you'd like to go. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. I guess if, do we get charged interest on that three point nine million?
No, you're not paying it out yet.
We receive or we're earning interest on investments that they have, you know, as we fund it. There are administrative costs, of course, because they administer the plan.
So are we, so do they adjust how much we pay them? Send us an envelope saying pay this much. Does that get affected by the three point nine, our our unfunded liability? Or is that just what is goes out to to pensioners? How is that determined?
No, there's a, there's a certain percentage of what is going out to those who are receiving pension right now and a percentage that is going in the savings account per se. Everything that's going into the savings is being invested by them for future payouts.
Mister Knobtrop.
I guess I just want to make sure I'm I'm understanding this. The the unfunded portion is not money going out. It's just when you, when you do the actuarial computation of all the
Right.
retired people and yet-to-be-retired people were short. It's not costing us anything. And we are pretty much farther ahead than many cities in Michigan.
Many.
Which we ought to be happy about. And and if we got the money, it would be great to 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 have it funded because it is a liability that we have. I mean, it is. But it, I don't think there's a giant rush.
Does it affect us at all on bond issues if we were to go for a bond? Would that, would not be looked at at all?
I don't think, I don't think unfunded pension is in the, in the wheelhouse of of.
It's on the Michigan.
It would, you know what? It would be if we were in a bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we were in a bad uh.
But it it is listed in the Michigan, in the uh data.
Thing that I got from Tina.
That you got from Tina, it is in that. Mister Moore.
Well, the thing that's frustrating though is because the actuarial assumptions continue to fluctuate, then that impacts how our annual payments impact the percentage that's funded. Hence, my argument, well, it's not an argument, my suggestion that we just, you know, revisit this to the extent we can accelerate it. I mean, it seems it decreases that impact to some degree. I mean, revisiting with the action plan sounds like a fine idea to me.
Okay, let's do that. Are you good with that, council? Okay, who else has something they would like to discuss? Okay, so here's, here's where we can go with this. If we have a motion, we will have to include these, some of these changes.
I got it.
You have it, Tina?
I think.
I I think really the only thing we need to add because um would be the Pier B electrical upgrade uh along with the dredging project. So we only have one of those in the budget um at three hundred thousand. So if we put the second one in and with the disclaimer pending, you know, grant funding, um, that would be an amendment. The other ones that we talked about, um, we already have the slope restoration bypass project in the budget at fifty thousand. So that would be, wouldn't be a change. Um, the sub-area plan is already removed, so that would not be a change. Um, Councilmember DeMore, I don't know if you've got something else.
I got it.
Do you wish to make a motion to start more discussion on this? Would you like to make a motion since you seem to have it?
I have a question first before.
Please, question, Miss Walker.
So assuming that we still have about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall for the budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Use, use of fund bonds, fund bonds.
Tell me more about those.
All right. Afterwards, afterwards. Yes, we have a deficit right now, but at the end of twenty twenty five, we are going to experience a no, not a transfer, just a positive, positive fund balance. So netting out the two years will essentially.
A wash. It's basically a wash. Is that correct?
Thank you.
So.
Please proceed.
Back to Miss DeMore.
I move um to move forward the resolution set forward on pages thirty three through thirty six of the agenda packet with the addition of adding the Pier B electrical upgrade grade project for the Marina with the dredging project pending grant funding.
I second that.
Hey, any other discussion, council? Mister Shields. Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Knobtrop.
Um, I want to also remember that the whole FEMA reimbursement, I know you don't want to have that in the, in the, in the budget, and I'm not saying it is. But we spent a lot of money in twenty five that we do expect to have in twenty six. That's going to be a a positive thing to our fund balance.
That is correct.
Thank you. Good, good summary summation. Nothing from council?
We need a second. We have a second.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second. Mister Knobtrop.
Okay, thank you.
Public wish to speak to council regarding this matter. Come up, hit the thing to get it green. Talk to council on this, anyone? Anyone on public? No. I'm going to go.
Eric, did you, did you understand the amendment okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I go to Miss Beck for roll.
DeMore?
Aye.
Knobtrop?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Shields?
No.
Murphy?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. The budget is approved for twenty twenty six at this point. Next is new business and it's the adoption of a proposed resolution approving the city's two thousand twenty six schedule of fees and charges. I turned over to City Manager Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in your packet is the schedule of fees and charges, um, both uh the proposed changes for twenty six. You can see on page thirty nine of your packet. These are the proposed changes, uh proposed, what is current, and then the difference. And then the entirety of the rates, fees and charges is also in your packet with those uh changes. So I would open up the floor to any questions, feedback on these proposed changes for twenty twenty six.
Mister Moore.
So can I just ask a point of clarification on page thirty nine, one of the ads? With the add of the fee of twenty five dollars for pickleball and tennis courts per hour, that is based on my reading of this for non-affiliated sports groups, not for someone who would just wish to go and play pickleball, pickleball. Am I, am I right on that?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. That, this would be for outside groups that want to use our um facility for a tournament that generates revenue for that entity. We feel like similar to what we do with the uh baseball, softball, Ed Whitefield. Um, charging those uh tournaments for court time is something that we should consider. This is not for um anyone locally that wants to play, you know, pickleball. You know, they don't have to, this is not for them to pay these fees, if you will. This is for, again, tournaments that are occupying the space that potentially could not be used otherwise. So that's just to, there's a little bit of staff time involved with that type of uh tournament-type setup. So we felt like we needed to have some cost mechanism in the, in the fees.
What has been your feedback from the public on charges uh at this point for gazebo shelters and special areas? Do you, do you have, what's your feedback on, from those people?
Um, as far as what are they are currently and
Yeah.
I haven't had any.
You haven't had people call up and say this is outrageous?
No.
Okay. One question, that's the Marina waiting list annual fee. I I get asked this all the time, and now somewhat, especially in the summertime now. What is the waitlist? How many is on it and what's, how long is it? Do you know?
Yeah, there's over two hundred on our waitlist now, right now, and we have multiple people signed up. You know, the same person signed up multiple times, and so to keep people, um, I shouldn't say the word honest. We we have very great people here. Um, but to keep the the true people that want to have space um and are are interested in in being on a waitlist, we think that it's, it's prudent to have some sort of mechanism in place to to kind of weed out and maybe shorten this list and and really try to get some turnover on this list. Many marinas have this. We have never done it before, so this would be a new um, new fee to, if you're interested in continuing to be on a waitlist, it would be twenty five dollars a year to keep that current.
Can I ask what the waitlist time is? When the last person that got on, how long had they been waiting, do you know?
Yeah, I don't.
Somebody said it was five years, but I don't know.
Been seven, something like that. Okay.
Very good. Mister Knobtrop.
Um, maybe I missed it here. I had actually two questions. I didn't see a seasonal rate for the um Magnus Park. And I didn't see, I saw the daily rates, but I thought, you know, we 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 raising the the seasonal rate for the Marina, are we doing in that?
We are not proposing any rate increases for Magnus Park. We did that last year. Um, I think we tried to take a little bit of a break on that and not do it every year unnecessarily.
Seasonal rates? Because I didn't see it.
Oh, seasonal rates, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um.
I was, actually, I was okay with the daily rates. It was the seasonal rates. I was trying to understand how much of a discount we're giving. And I didn't see it anywhere.
I think there's a limit. I, you cannot stay the whole season at Magnus Park. I think there's a certain number of days that you can stay.
Pay the daily rate times the number of days.
I think there might be.
I understood there was a seasonal.
A weekly rate.
Or a weekly or a month.
More than a week.
Yeah, it's more than a week. It might be. Yeah, a month.
I understood that we had some type of of a monthly, monthly fee, seasonal fee.
Sarah, are you aware of that?
I don't know offhand, no.
Okay.
I just know there's a higher rate during peak season. And I know in the past, they could not stay all summer. But I haven't been up to par on if any of those criteria has changed.
So to be clear, we do not discount anything other than peak and non-peak daily rate. So if someone's going to stay thirty days, they're going to pay the daily rate times thirty.
That's my understanding. I can get back with you on that, but.
Because that's different than what I understood before, so that's, that's why I'm kind of beating it to death a little bit.
Miss DeMore.
So also on page thirty nine, there's just one where the proposed rate is less, and that's under Office of City Clerk. And it's my understanding that that amount was reduced because of some statutory change that made the efforts of the city staff decreased. And I don't know if Sarah wants to speak to that, or Amy, is that correct, kind of overall?
I may have Amy, if you don't mind, Amy coming up and talking about the redevelopment liquor licenses, the change from was that, was that you, seven fifty to five fifty?
Um, I'm not aware what the fee change was, that may be a Sarah question.
Weren't, didn't you propose that, though?
No.
Sarah, do you want to chime in on that?
Sure. Um, actually, when Amy and I, the downtown manager, met regarding a few items on redevelopment liquor licenses, we did review these fees, and it was my understanding um that there were, that there are two licenses um per state statute. It's A one A, has several psych criteria. A one B, several criteria. And um for many, many years, when we first initiated some of these licenses, uh, there was more staff involvement with one type over the other. So that's where the seven fifty and five hundred were established. And then the state, I do believe in conversations with them, state statute changed um in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two that we weren't necessarily aware of. Um, we don't approve a lot of these licenses regularly. So in conversations and doing um an audit of how many redevelopment liquor licenses we had, et cetera, some of the requirement of city staff on um looking at dollars invested in real and personal property or rehab money for some of these applicants was a little bit less. And um maybe I misunderstood. And maybe I misunderstood Ms. Tweetin', but I believe we had agreed to change both of those fees to five fifty to have the same fee for both because it was near the same amount of work now, based on the criteria that changed.
Yeah, my understanding or discussion was that because we have the, because the law did change and the licenses we have involve less data collection on investment in downtown over a certain number of years. And that moving forward, if we were going to get a request for a DDA license, it would probably be that less time-consuming license that we felt that license could have a lower fee, just based on less staff time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
I can report on the US Jason, something. I can report on the Magnus Park or sixty-eight units. You can stay all summer if you wish. Once checked in, just keep it in and stay the whole summer. The other thing is there's roughly eighteen to twenty of the sixty-eight that basically stay all summer long.
So is there a summer rate or they just do it day by day?
Day by day.
No, I was just getting.
Okay. Mr. Shields.
Thanks, Mayor. Manager Horn, the special, can you remind me again, the the special, this is page forty-three, the fees for special meetings, planning commissions, zoning board of appeals. Those are, so if if it's examples, a resident has a non-conforming situation, they want to seek approval to do something. Is that, is that a special meeting? Or is that like those called for outside of the regularly scheduled meetings?
Those are outside the regularly scheduled meetings. That's what that.
That's what that is, yes. So the, in a regularly scheduled meeting, it would just be the application fee. There wouldn't be this additional charge.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion for possibly acceptance of the reason?
I move to support the the fee schedule.
I have a motion for Mr. Noctrob, do I have a second?
Support.
I have a second from Ms. Demore. I have a motion for Mr. Noctrob, second from Ms. Demore. Does the public wish to speak to the council on this? They're being on, I go to Ms. Beck for raw.
Noctrob?
Aye.
Demore?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Shields?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. We'll start with Ward Three, Mr. Noctrob. First, council comments.
I did want to, I I started an outreach feedback email list a couple weeks ago. And I've gotten quite a bit, but I'd like to, if anybody that's listening or anybody knows of anybody that's in Ward Three, I'd love to get their name and email address so that I can communicate directly to them.
Ward Two, Mr. Shields.
So my penultimate city council comments. You know, I've I've had some disappointments the last five years, but I I feel proud of the of of continually showing up and and trying to do disagreements well. And I thank you all for doing those well with me and alongside me. And, you know, trying to seek the common good in this community. And, you know, so specifically, I want to thank all of you. Mayor, thank you for being someone who shows up and you're very committed to the city. I applaud your dedication to Petoskey. Ms. Demore, I appreciate you. Thank you for being very intentional and consistent in trying, in in wanting to seek public input and and having an equal opportunity for the community to give voice. I've learned lots from you, talking with you and encouraging disagreeing with you. I appreciate, appreciate you. Mr. Noctrob, you ask great questions. Thank you so much for your curiosity. And I wish I had more time to to get to know you more. Ms. Walker, I very much appreciate your your passion and knowledge in our community, sustainability, and your your bold voice for for those who are more vulnerable. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
You are coming back two weeks from now.
He'll be here.
He'll be here two weeks from now.
That was just part one.
Cliffhanger.
Ward Four.
Thank you, Mayor. What what I'd like to share this afternoon, or this evening? I have been serving as the city representative on Emmett County Department of Public Works Materials Management Planning for the last year. And I hopeful that in the next two years, I will and serving in that same capacity, I hope to do a more regular reporting back to this municipality and this board in terms of things that the city of Petoskey can be doing to divert more organic material from landfill, more recycling, heavily on the public space recycling and our Parks and Recreation Department having championed that over my duration of my children's attendance at Petoskey Public Schools over the last eighteen years, as well as my involvement in community spaces and public space events and incorporating best practices in public space recycling and making sure that we are doing comprehensive recycling, but also that we are not greenwashing and following systems of best practices in recycling. So I look forward to leaning into that position and reporting back to this governing body as we move forward with more diversion opportunities in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward One, Ms. Demore.
First of all, thank you for your kind words for all of us, Mr. Shields. And it's been my honor to respectfully disagree with you at times and to model for the community what constructive discourse can look like. Mr. Noctrob, I have an email for you, and it's a good one. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure, I'm guessing that we're going to circle back to the revision of the city council procedures once we kind of get to the new year or something like that.
Yep.
And I look forward to that. Thank you.
What a year it's been. And we still have a meeting to go. Make sure you get out this Friday, go downtown, see Santa Claus light the tree, visit our stores and shops. Following Saturday is Santa Claus's parade at ten o'clock going through downtown. Come cheer on children and the, et cetera, and Santa Claus. And by all means, drive safely home tonight, and we'll see you in two weeks. No further business, come for this, the council, I call this meeting adjourned. Just going to say something about the guys.